I'd like to call the order. Wednesday, August 2nd, finance meeting. First up is the approval of minutes of June 7th.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any close motion carries. Those minutes will be heading down your way. We had three departments, EDC, Tourism, and the Sheriff that we have not heard from as far as the budget hearing is concerned. So we'll do that here this morning to begin with. And first up is the Economic Development Corporation and Valerie. Good morning.
Good morning. It's my first time presenting up here in the new chambers. It's so nice. So I usually take a few minutes to provide an EDC update during this workshop. I'm happy to do so if you have time. If not, I can go straight into the budget. Just let me know what you prefer.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So as you probably read in the newspaper, and I know many of you have attended events this year, the EDC has been very busy with new business development activity. We kicked off the year with the announcement of Liberation Labs locating and purchasing 36 acres in the Midwest Industrial Park. And several of you attended their official groundbreaking ceremony on June the 29th. That project will lead to a capital investment of $115 million and 45 new jobs at an average wage of $35 per hour. And that is a biotech facility that is a precision fermentation operation. So essentially, they're producing animal alternative proteins for the alternative food industry. So a very high-tech industry. It'll be the first facility of its kind in the United States. And then we announced in February, The Viking Group, planning to build a new pipe manufacturing plant and 40 acres in the new Phase 3 of the Midwest Industrial Park and the Tushawag ground that we recently purchased. That project was to entail a $63 million investment in the creation of 111 jobs. However, the company has put that project on hold for the time being. They have reassured us that Richmond is their preferred location, but they're in the process of just ensuring that the project scope is right-sized for the future. So we foresee that, you know, the project scope could increase, but we're giving the company some time to work out those details and come back to us. So we're waiting patiently to figure out what that new scope might entail. And then we announced at Blue Buffalo. I'm sure you all are familiar with Blue Buffalo and the Midwest Industrial Park. Just four years after they had their grand opening, they've committed to another $200 million investment to add on 169,000 square feet to their building. That will be to provide additional food processing for pets, but also additional warehouse space as well. So that's a great project for Richmond. They've been really good community partners and have been very collaborative with many not-for-profits throughout the community. They are planning to hire anywhere between 50 and 60 employees that pay around $24 per hour. And then our most recent announcement welcomes Anchor Ingredients to Wayne County. Anchor's planning to build a new rail trains load facility that will be for pet food ingredients. So it'll provide bulk storage, some light ingredient processing, and then distribution to pet food companies. And they're building right next to Blue Buffalo. Blue actually sold them about 32 acres of ground, and they will be building a facility there, investing around $40 million, planning to hire 30 new people at an average wage of $25 an hour. So if all projects were to move forward, now we know we're waiting on The Viking Group to determine what their scope is, but from what we've announced this year among those four projects, that totals $418 million in new capital investment and 246 new job commitments. So great year so far. We still have a lot of projects in the pipeline, both new attraction and then some local business expansion projects that we're working on. So the team remains very busy with business development. Since the acquisition of the Tushawag and Talbot properties to expand the Midwest Industrial Park, Sarah and the Industrial Park Committee, they're working to make that ground shovel ready now. So right now, we have RFPs out for environmental firms to come in and do the environmental cleanup for all the homes and farms that are left. And once that is complete, we'll be working with the Richmond Fire Department on a controlled burn to remove the structures. And they're intending for that to be a countywide fire training for all of the fire departments across the county. So happy to partner with them in that way. We also continue to work on the sewer capacity upgrade for the Midwest Industrial Park, as well as the water infrastructure upgrades that are needed at the Gateway Industrial Park in Cambridge City. And lastly, in addition to business recruitment and expansion, we're also still focused on the recruitment of people to Wayne County. The Make My Move program is still going strong. To date, we've welcomed six remote workers to Wayne County. That totaled eight new residents. Those two trailing spouses have entered our local workforce, so that's a great thing. But our remote workers have come from California, Nevada, Colorado, Michigan, Florida, and Ohio. The average salary of those remote workers is just a little over $71,000 a year. We also continue to work on the Home &amp; Wayne brand, which is also focused on assisting our local businesses with talent recruitment and retention. And then we're currently working on six different housing projects throughout Wayne County that include both market-grade apartments and single-family home subdivisions. So a lot going on in that front as well. And then strategic planning. There's been a lot going on this year. As we've been wrapping up our regional efforts with Ready 1.0, we're now starting to shift into planning for Ready 2.0. And then I've been very involved with the county's help program, developing our strategic investment plan. And then came along the Lilly Community and College Collaboration Grant, where I've been working with IU East and Earlham on developing those plans. So a lot is going on with planning, but it's a great opportunity to bring in outside dollars and infuse those into the community, all for quality life enhancements throughout Wayne County. Any questions? Okay. All right, jumping into the budget. I sent you all that on Monday morning. In total, our budget estimate for 2024 is $775,594.77. That is a slight increase up over our 2023 budget, up about 3.5% over last year, which equates to about $26,400 in increases. As I stated in my email, the majority of that is in personnel services. I'm sure as you're experiencing, the cost of health insurance continues to rise. We're budgeting to bring another dependent onto our insurance this year. So about $25,400 of that $26,400 increase is in all personnel services. So salaries, federal payroll taxes, health insurance, long and short-term disability, et cetera. And then we did see an increase of about $1,000 in staff training and education as our attendance at conferences and trade shows continues to rise, and those entry fees are only going up. And then one notable change this year is we did move $10,000 from marketing to contractual and professional services. So that decreased marketing from $65,000 to $55,000 and increased contractual professional services from $50,000 to $60,000. And that's because there's so much unpredictability in terms of what we might need from outside contractors next year, especially as we're working on making the industrial park shovel-ready, that we might have to engage some more outside contractors to help with industrial park development. So we thought moving those funds would give us more flexibility in use of those dollars.
Are there any questions for Valerie?
I just wanted to explain about this. Valerie and I had a conversation because last year she did a 3%, and we did 6.5 county-wide. So she's doing the 6.5 this year, so.
Valerie, I do have a quick question. How many vehicles do you have? I see it says vehicle insurance. How many do you have?
Just one.
Just one?
Just one.
Are there any other questions? We appreciate you coming in this morning.
Okay, if you take anything later, just get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Walker.
Nice. Oh, my God. Two of you.
Tourism. Good morning.
I'm glad you're here. I'm new to this. So I just want to take a minute and say kudos to Valerie and her team for all the wonderful work that you guys are doing. It's incredible. So it's wonderful to be partners with EDC and the Chamber and others as we talk about quality of place and those types of things that certainly enhance tourism, but at the same time, it's kind of a twofer. It also helps with attraction retention of talent. So pleased to hear all the wonderful things you're doing. So you would have received our budget information a week and a half ago, and I'd be happy as we go through the budget. But before we get into that, just wanted to say a couple of things. I applaud council and the commissioners on all of the work that you are doing, Steve Higginbotham as well, with the fairgrounds. In the advent of hiring Haley for that position, she is going to do a great job. We are so thrilled with her experience that she brings in, her enthusiasm, her energy. And I think that you will be really pleased in the next couple of years. It'll take time to build that. Didn't get to a deficit overnight. But I think with Haley's direction, working with our office as well, as well as the upgrades that you're putting in is terrific. So thank you so much for seeing that as a vested value in the fairgrounds and continuing to make those upgrades, because that really does make a difference when we're in competition with securing groups for that facility. So thank you very much. I, like Valerie, have been very involved in the Help Quality of Place segment, serving as chair, and then also with the Earlham-Lilly grant. You know, it's an amazing time out of just the few years I've been here. At rest. Take them away. Well, yeah, I'm always a part of those. But when we have that synergy of these one-time dollars, this is an amazing opportunity for Wayne County. And so very pleased to be working with both of those groups and seeing what we can do in terms of impactful projects long-term. So it's an exciting time and pleased to be a part of that. Another opportunity that we have coming up on April 8th, anyone know what that is? Total solar eclipse. So what I have been terming that as, our goal is to have controlled chaos. And it's an awesome opportunity for our communities to really be engaged in something that truly is a once-in-a-lifetime event. The next total solar eclipse that will be coming will be 1,000 years from now. So this is something that while we're looking at engaging visitors and mass people, I mean, we've heard in working with Wes Tobin at IU East, who's the professor of physics and astronomy, he's very confident that we could be looking at anywhere between 50 and 100,000 people coming in for that three-to-four-day period. So Monday, April 8th, is when the actual event occurs. But what we're trying to do, working with our communities, Richmond, Wayne County, et cetera, is to build events and that type of thing so we can get them here for a little longer stay, hopefully Friday, Saturday, Sunday, actually depart on Tuesday. I don't want to scare you, but what we've been told from previous cities is the congestion after the eclipse is incredible. So we're also looking at ways that we can get people to spend the night, Monday night, at least some of them, so we can ease some of that congestion. But it's been a great experience working with our communities. All the Wayne County communities are getting fired up about this. And Max, you tell me if I'm pronouncing it correctly, but Dalton Township is actually the longest duration. So when you talk about the path of totality, if any of you have seen that, it's a swath of land that goes through 15 states in the U.S. And Dalton, the middle line is the duration line. And so Dalton is right on that line, which is about four. So the total eclipse nerds, they will be coming to Dalton, so be prepared. But it's something that, again, is a once-in-a-lifetime, and how do we do this in a way that visitors have a great experience, as well as locals? So this is not just for visitors, but it's to get everyone involved and engaged and get that Hoosier hospitality going. Valerie, at a recent meeting, gave an example of Dot Foods. And one of their experience here was a gas station attendant. And they had such a great experience, in some part, made their decision to land here. And so it's things like that. We need to get our citizens engaged, involved. It's going to take all hands on deck, bring your family and friends in, but it's going to be a great experience. And I'm so pleased to see all of the different communities getting their own groups together. So we've got a core group that is both for infrastructure and marketing, and we're having two representatives from each of the smaller communities serve on that. So we have that ongoing communication, connectedness for each of those groups, and then we have subgroups under that. But it's going to be a great experience, and so be prepared, April 8th. So as I said to others, I will keep my comments brief, so we'll get into the budget. Does anyone need a copy? I did bring extra copies if you need them.
I take Mark's.
Okay. I sent yours via email, Mark. So as we move forward, we're proposing our 2024 budget to be $958,660 would be our operating budget. Our debt service, which, by the way, 2024, if my calculations are correct, will be the last year. Yes! So that is $40,840 for a total of $999.5. With regards to the individual categories, we have administrative at $126,478, supplies at $8,750, other services and charges at $105,895, capital outlays at $8,000, and promotion at $709,537, for, again, an operating total of $958,660. Just a few, I spoke to most of you prior to this regarding budget and answering any questions. Just to go through a couple of category accounts that you may see an up or a decrease. Health insurance, as again Valerie relayed, is going nothing but up. So you certainly see an increase in that. Legal fees, you see an increase of about $4,000. That's attributed to our audit. So we, in the past, have been fortunate enough to do local audits. Our last CPA firm was Webbin Associates. We learned from them that they are no longer doing audits, so we received quotes from four entities, Bradyware locally being one of those, and three outside. We chose one of those outside in Greensburg due to costs, but it still went up about $4,000 with regards to our annual audit. Capital outlays, you'll see where that decreased. We had $26,000 for this year and $8,000 for next year. $26,000 essentially is for our network server, and that will occur yet this year. And then, of course, that will last us, like everything else does for us, 10 to 12, 15 years, at least we hope so. And then convention marketing, you see where that's up nearly $30,000. A large part of that is due to software called Placer AI. It's a data software, and if any of you would like to, at some point, see what it can do, I'd be happy to show you. But it allows us to, by Google, to draw parameters around certain places. So when we were working with the fairgrounds, worked with Steve and others in that group to look at other communities. So we looked at Newcastle, we looked at Hendricks County, we looked at fairgrounds. And we draw the parameter, and it will immediately tell us, I mean seconds, what the visitation is, where are they coming, what their median income is, their demographics, and it's all collected via cellphone data. So we all have our cellphones. It's collecting data, as we know, but it's an incredible tool that I think, not just for tourism, but maybe other organizations can also be used. So it can provide, so one of the things, just using the fairgrounds as an example, we can go three years back, and so we can look at what the fairgrounds is currently, and then every year, we can draw the same parameters and say, okay, how has that changed? What do we have visitation? Do we have more out-of-town groups coming in, et cetera? So it provides a wonderful tool for not just the Bureau, but also, another example is Warm Glow. I did a parameter for Warm Glow, and when I presented it to Jackie Carberry, she said, oh my, she says, you know, she says, I knew we had 15% that was local and the rest was out-of-town, but this solidified that. So it actually showed where her business was coming from. It allows us to also target areas that maybe we didn't know we were doing as well in, Pennsylvania, whatever, and we can then put dollars towards that. So it's a fantastic tool that I think every year, we're just learning it, so there's more and more uses that we can do. But that's a large part of that 29. And then we've also added additional dollars to lead generation, which is sales, and event group retention as well. And then out-of-town expenses were up about $3,100. That's essentially adding two media marketplaces. Some of you may have seen the article that just ran in Inside Indiana Business. It was talking about our Antique Alley, which has been the longest-running theme that we've had for 20 years. But it's still kicking us out of the ballpark. I mean, people are interested in that. And I know Beth in Cambridge City, they, I mean, it is the Mecca, and that's a wonderful thing for Cambridge and for Center Lawn for others. But we've added two additional media marketplaces, working with media writers, that's Nancy Sartain from my office. And then also, we've added a national travel industry educational conference, too. We think it's important to always, when staff goes, they come back so energized because it's sharing of ideas and learning of new ideas. And so we've added a national conference to that. So those are probably the things that might jump out to most of you. So with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions.
On the Placer AI, is that a one-time expense or a year?
No, it's an annual. Yes. So you'll be seeing that.
Yeah, it's amazing the software.
It is.
Really, it's a big help.
And we've just hit the surface of what we can do with it.
I think it would be well to point out to those on the TV or anyone else that this budget is not funded by property tax dollars from our general fund. It's from the hotel motel tax, as well as the EDC is funded from the edit tax, not our general fund, property tax dollars.
Right. And so just to expound on that just briefly, when we talk about the hotel motel tax or the innkeeper's tax, it's the out-of-town people who pay that tax. And the local lodging establishments collect it, send it to the treasurer's office, et cetera. So appreciate you mentioning that.
How has that amount of tax collected? It's gone up?
Yes.
And how do you anticipate that here? Are there new developments that are?
Well, as I'm sure you're all aware of, with the new hotels that we've had, you know, it's like anything else, people don't invest 10 to 15, 20 million dollars if they don't think that they can be successful. So in the last three years, we've had two new properties crop up. There's another piece of land that has been bought several years ago, prior to COVID, actually, who is the owner of Fairfield Inn, that I think at some point, that will be developed. And so one of the fantastic opportunities with those developments is that it gives us pieces to our puzzle. So we added Home 2 Suites, which is an extended state property. We just added Comfort Suites, which is an all-suite property. Those were pieces that we were missing in our inventory, so to speak. And so to have those, it now gives us more of a well-rounded price point. And so those additions have been tremendous, as you can see in our budget. And we look for that to continue and grow. The properties that have just developed, I mean, they have an amazing opportunity. And so they're doing well, as well as our others. So we're excited about that.
And as the average daily rate goes up?
Yes.
So does the tax that's collected.
And the more people we bring in.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Mary's very conservative with her projections, so I mean, I look forward to being more than what she's projecting, for sure.
And I think most of you also know, through your experience of working with tourism, that if, God forbid, we have any other additional altering changes like COVID and others, God forbid, we always immediately will adjust the budget. We don't wait for anyone to say, oh, you know, how are you doing? Aren't you going to adjust? We do that. We take that to heart, and we immediately adjust the budget downward so that we're not overspending and so that we do have monies that we can still pay staff and do our job. That's so important in the most critical of times. So in my tenure, the two times I can think of that have been horrific is the housing crisis that we had back in 2008, 2009, as well as then the COVID. And so barring any of those, we should be well on our way. I thought, as Beth said, we try to be conservative in our estimations.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for coming in this morning, Mary. We appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. And thank you all for your support, too, and the commissioners as well.
I just want to say we're lucky to have both of those ladies in our community doing the work that they do, because what Valerie told us just fills my mind. It's amazing, the business that's been brought into Wayne County and the people, and I'm just proud of both the vendors and what they do for us.
Okay, now we're going to turn back to the general fund. We've heard from everybody other than the sheriff. I've got a few numbers before we get to that that I wanted to share. It appears that the requests are about 4.4 million higher than last year's budget. There's a total of 35 new employees that have been requested. Our new money reoccurring is about $680,000. $218,000 of that has was spent earlier on the additional healthcare and mental care for inmates. So our dollars this year are limited. Our requests are probably higher than I've ever seen. So that's, we went through the majority of the general fund, but we didn't have that number that we were over last year's adopted budget. So I just had that and wanted to share that. So I just had that and wanted to share that.
Do we have our cash balance, that projected cash balance for 23%?
Mark has been working on that.
Go ahead while I find it.
Okay. And the 1% increase, do you know what that would be? I think it's around $218,000, $220,000.
It's back in my office.
Pardon?
It's back in my office.
Okay. So that kind of gives you a little bit of a?
Do you want me to go again?
We'll need it here later. We don't have, we don't need it immediately. We'll let the sheriff go. Just want to give you some numbers here beforehand. And we can talk about it.
The $680,000 is from property tax.
From property tax. Right. Income tax, we do not know if there is an increase or a decrease.
That could be either way.
It could be either way. Right. So, okay. With that, Sheriff Rutter, you want to come up and give us just a second? I guess it looks like it starts on page 80.
Looking a little bit older today than yesterday.
Maybe just a year.
Okay. We're good.
Thank you. Yeah, good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'd like to believe that you saved your best for last, but there may be a few other factors that put me here. So I do want to ask, out of respect for counsel and the time that you have allotted today, do you want me to cover or talk about anything concerning employee raises, or do you want to leave that for another meeting? I know that historically?
I think we can lay on that.
Historically, that's something that's?
Because of our Irwin report that's coming in.
Okay.
Sure.
We'll certainly do that. I will go then and go directly to the jail budget. And I do want to note, there is one addition in there that I did not have submitted when I turned this in in June. That's something that's came up in conversation that I've had with Steve Higginbotham. That's, we determined it was best to be replaced in my budget. And that would be an addition of $35,000 to line item 22360. And that's 22360, cleaning and janitorial. And that's to replace the floor cleaning machine for our building. We have actually gone without the ability to use that machine for about two years now. We've been trying everything that we can to make repairs to that machine. And it's my understanding that it is no longer, it's no longer serviceable. We've determined that that needs to be replaced. And it's my understanding as well that that was originally purchased when the building was moved into back in 2004. So it's almost 20 years old, and it's time to be replaced. I do have one estimate on that. We're working on two others. The estimate on that was $34,800. I've asked for a $35,000 increase to that for the replacement of that as a one-time purchase. The other two that I have listed is increasing 33200, which is our contracted professional. That increase is solely for the increase in the inmate medical healthcare contract that we worked with commissioners and council to make that happen this year. And we've signed a two-year contract for that, which, again, would increase, increase that line item to $890,000.
Could you remind me about that increase?
Last year, last year's was $615,000. That's what the budget was for last year. So that would be, quick math, what, $275,000.
Yeah.
And a large part of that, too, in addition to the extra services that they're requiring to provide, because frankly, our inmate health has declined significantly over the last few years. And we know that all the stir that we heard earlier about COVID and some of the problems that that created, we believe that that, in addition to the increasing narcotic use, you know, our, some of the clients that I serve, has created this health epidemic. But a large part of that also, in fact, an estimated $48,000 is for dental health, dental care, which historically, historically, that had been $1,000 a month. Unfortunately, the dentist that we had at the time that was contracted through Quality Correctional Care has retired. And it's my understanding that we cannot find another dentist that will be willing to come in and serve a population of our inmates for $1,000 a month. So the estimated cost, and the cheapest that I've been able to find so far is, we're estimating at a high of about $4,000 a month, which is what my request is.
That line item, Randy, I had a, like, additional medical and mental was going to be about $218,000. So how do we go from $218,000 to $275,000?
That's what my number is, they?
I thought it was around $218,000 or $215,000, something like that.
Yeah, that's correct. And the first year, let's see, I've got the contract here. For the 20, for the 23, 24 year, because the contract initiated in May, so it will run May to May consecutively, that was $813,000. So that would be correct. Next year, it's $837,433, which is an additional $25,000. And if you want me to tighten that down to try to tell you exactly how much we're going to pay for in 2024, I can do that. But part of the problem we ran into in years past is on their billing cycles. They, we bill a month in advance. So in December, we're going to be paying for the higher rate, you know, for the following year. So I, that's the reason I asked for the additional money.
Okay.
To be able to make sure that?
If you could tell us, because money is tight this year, the exact number that it'll be in 2024?
Sure.
You know, if we can reduce that 40,000 or 50,000, that goes a long way.
Okay. Yep, happy to do that. Sheriff, back on your line item 22360, was that an increase of $35,000 to the $40,000 is already in your proposed budget? That's correct. Thank you.
And I think that's something we can do more out of our one-time money. Because, I mean, you don't need that in your budget every year for that machine. So we can probably put that on our one-time. We only have two things on our one-time so far.
You're telling me that?
So far. So far.
And if you'd like me to come back and present that as a single purchase in an appropriation, I can do that.
We could. I mean, that's probably something, that way it decreases overall budget.
I agree. If we took it out of one-time money, wouldn't that be appropriated either? Would not have to be. Wouldn't that, advertising, go through that route?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Helps you out.
Okay. Any questions on the jail budget?
Go ahead.
You still, have you covered all of the?
No, I have not. The last item on there is, well, I'm sorry, I do have one other line item, is training and education. Asking again for the second year for an addition to our training and education to increase to $5,000. Historically, it has been $0 for quite some time. And, you know, I have to remind everyone what the unfortunate staffing situation revolving doors we're experiencing in most sectors throughout our nation are experiencing as well. Training is a big problem. Every new employee that I have, at the minimum, we spend $110 for training them through the Dakota System, which is through the National Institute of Jail Operations. And we also spend $145 through NIGIL to get their National Certified Corrections Officer certification. All that's done within the first year of employment. So every officer, every new officer that we hire pays $255. And I'm just, I've always been paying that out of commissary, you know, as a good gesture and to keep business going. I'm just simply asking for a little bit of help from counsel, if there's funding available for that. I don't know if there are any questions on that part of it, but I just have one last item on the jail budget. The last item I have on the jail budget is the addition of one transport officer. Did ask for that last year as well. And because of their, because of their duties, they would have to be classified as a jail deputy and would be, their salary would be commensurate with the 2024 jail deputy's salary. I can't give you a number on that because we don't know what that number is yet. But it would be the addition of one equal to that. A large part of the reason that I'm asking for that is the increase of mental health transports that we're seeing. We're on track to triple the number of mental health transports that were required to do by court order than we were last year. We're at a, at a point where I have my patrol deputies on an on-call basis that are required to come in when they're off-duty to do these transports. I've got people in the jail that are required to be on-call just for these types of transports. It's very common for us not to learn about these transport orders until about 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. The courts have been great with us. They've been trying as much as they can to notify us as early as they can to give us that timeframe. But sometimes that's not possible. And with, in the healthcare system, beds for the long-term care facilities, they won't guarantee and hold those for eight hours. So from the time that we get to court order, we have approximately eight hours to deliver that person, or when we get there, they may not have a bed available for us. It's certainly put us in a conundrum many times. And we've, again, been lucky enough to work with the courts occasionally, but that, there's no control over the numbers that we're dealing with. Now, I am, through the good graces of the commissioners and the fortune of my position as the president of our Sheriff's Association, have been able to contact a company that specializes in mental health transports. And we're currently exploring that as an option. And if, if we're able to come to an agreement with that company, we find it is financially feasible for the county and a better option overall, that might certainly alleviate that. But I will remind counsel, too, that every, every person that leaves my jail requires at least one person that is pulled from my jail in order to do that. So if I take somebody out to the hospital, if they're a low-level offender, then they have to have one. If they're a higher-level offender, they have to have two. And that's regardless if they're there for an hour or if they're there for three or four days. I have to staff them 24 hours in a day. So it's a huge draw on my resources and very, very taxing on my employees.
Randy, can I ask a couple of questions? One, how far are you taking them? You know, where's the, where are you usually taking them?
Yeah, I would say probably 50% of our transports are going to Indianapolis. There are a variety of locations in Indianapolis. The rest are scattered from anywhere from Bloomington to Evansville to Crown Point. So, you know, if you're looking at a trip to Crown Point, you're looking at eight to 10-hour minimum turnaround from the time that they leave our facility.
Okay. And I think we all know that we had a sheriff's deputy in Marion County that was killed during the transport. I worry, and I want to make sure for me and the public, that that's not going to happen to one of our people. I don't know what happened, but do we have, I'm assuming we have all the safeguards that that could never happen.
We train our staff, and we have protocols in place that make that a lot less likely. But as you know, I, you know, we unfortunately live in a very dynamic profession and one that's, one that can be dangerous at times. But we do make great effort. And in fact, I didn't mention, I should have, in, under the training and education, I've spent over $140,000 in training over the last two years, just to make sure my staff has everything that they need available.
Thank you.
With the increase in the, in the contract and part of that being for mental services, won't the transports be lower than what they've been?
No. And thanks for bringing that up. And I'll make sure that I clarify what these are. These are folks that are taken to Reed Health, and they're in their, most of them are, taken from Reed Health to a long-term care facility. So if our agency, if RPB, if any one of the other Wayne County police agencies, or any other agency outside of Wayne County brings a person in that's in a mental health crisis, takes them to Reed Health for stabilization, and they're, then they're determined that they need long-term care. Reed Health goes to the court, asks the court for an emergency detention, which is a longer-term court ordered stay. And then those folks are then transported to wherever that facility is. Unfortunately, by statute, it is the county's responsibility for where that person is currently at. It's our financial responsibility to make sure that that transport is taken care of. So, so these folks, 99% of these folks are coming from Reed Health and their mental health. I don't know if that answers your question exactly.
Right. But if we had somebody that had mental health issues, the company that we contract with can come in and provide services. I mean, if they, if they didn't do that, wouldn't we be transporting them somewhere for mental health services?
They're only, they're only providing mental health services to the inmates in the jail.
Right. And that's what I'm talking about. So if they're providing them to, in the past, if an inmate required mental health services, don't we transport them somewhere?
No. No, that's taken care of in the jail, by that company.
Before, I thought, I thought we were paying additional for healthcare and mental health services.
And that's true, because the mental health of the inmates that we have has been on decline, and the need for additional services within the jail is current. Again, the folks that we're talking about, or I'm talking about, are people that are taken to Reed Health, straight to Reed Health. They, they don't have criminal offense or have not been accused of criminal offenses.
They're not inmates.
That's correct.
They're just the general public.
Yeah, but I thought by providing these additional services, that was going to reduce the amount of transports.
Maybe for inmates, but not for the general public that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I don't see, I don't, I think they're two totally separate issues.
Okay. When, yeah. But I think, I think when you came for us, that was kind of a justification that we would have some lowering of cost.
I would have never tried to justify those two, because they're two separate issues. Now, if there was a misunderstanding, I would certainly apologize for that. But, yeah, those are two completely separate issues. Again, you know, the need for? Again, you know, the need for the mental health treatment within the jail is definitely has increased, and that's something that warranted my request for the additional services within the jail. But in, in no way is that going to impact the civilian population that we deal with that might be going to Reed.
Randy, how many times, we'll just say in a month, do you have an average, how many times that you're, you're transporting people from Reed? Do you have that number anywhere?
Yeah, so we, we transported, as of Monday, we transported one hundred and thirty-eight people, one hundred and thirty-eight transports as of the end of July. Last week, I think we did eleven last week alone.
Was that just for the month of July was one hundred and thirty-eight?
No, that's for the whole year.
Oh, okay, I thought, oh my gosh, okay, thank you.
So, I mean, it's, it's really, really close to about one a day, so.
Even if that's one a day, and it could be one or two people going to Indianapolis or wherever for eight hours, right?
Yeah, and unfortunately, a lot of times what we see is you'll have one going to Indianapolis, one going to Bloomington, you know, or one going to Crown Point, one going to Evansville. It's, it's never taken everybody to the same place, which would make it a lot simpler.
And Reed's, Reed's law enforcement arm doesn't have to do any of that because the law says the county will do it. Is that correct?
It's, the county's financial responsibility to do that, and the court orders are, well, the court orders are generic and say any law enforcement officer can do it, but, but it doesn't specify that Reed Health or any other police department takes care of it, so.
But the statute says the county does too.
That's correct.
Thank you.
To clarify the mental part of the QCC contract, I, I think the discussion was that hopefully it would reduce transports from the jail with the better coverage in the, inside the jail.
Yes, that is true.
I kind of think that's how we.
That's very true.
That's kind of how I understood that part.
And now that you mention it, I do kind of recall.
Medical issues as well as mental.
Yeah.
And absolutely, I, I did talk a lot about that, reducing, reducing the number of transports from the jail to Reed for medical issues. I'm, I'm hoping that the additional mental health services in the jail will have a pop, or an, an impact on the population once they get out, but there, yeah, two separate issues, and I think you're, you're absolutely right.
So Randy, you commented that on these transports from Reed, whether they're Wayne County resident or outside, what percent of those people that are transporting from Reed is outside of the county, not county residents?
I don't have that information. I could, I could check into that if, if Reed will give me that information because.
I just wonder how great of a thing that we were absorbing from other areas.
What I, what I can tell you is that the folks that are taken to like Fayette County or Randolph Counties Reed, satellite offices are brought here. This is the only place that they have for short-term treatment.
So because they're a regional facility, that puts a bigger burden on us?
Yes, sir. Okay, well, I think that does take care of the, the jail budget. Any questions on the jail budget? Then I'll move on to the enforcement budget. Retirement contributions is requested is five hundred and fifty million, three hundred and seven dollars, which is the amount that was calculated by Creed and Keen as the recommended county contribution. Their actuarial determine that five hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars is the actual minimum. I always ask for the recommended just as a safeguard, but that's, that's the justification for that, and I did send the letter from Creed and Keen, which sends that, I sent that to, I don't know if you have a copy of that or not.
Yes.
Excellent. Field equipment, I've asked for an increase of fifty-five thousand dollars, and that is in twofold. Four years ago, or will soon be four years ago, we bought new mobile data terminals for the patrol cars. The MDTs, mobile data terminals, is a computer that we have in the cars that allows our officers to receive and make calls, to enter crash reports and case reports and look up information that's vital to operations and their safety. Those are reaching, like I said, they're a little over three years old, they're, they're reaching the, their lifespan. And I don't want to come to you and ask you for all the money to replace all of them all at once. My hope is that we can do this over the course of two to three years, and I would initially ask fifteen thousand dollars to replace ten of those in 2024. Our estimated price on those were fifteen hundred dollars per unit. I'd like to start that replacement program of ten per year. So it would mean that I would, again, in, in twenty-four, I would come back and ask for an additional fifteen thousand to replace ten more in 2025.
So I would assume we have a total of forty of those units then?
Actually thirty. That'd be a three-year program.
Oh, I thought it was a four-year program. Oh, four years old, sorry.
Yeah. And then I'm also asking for forty thousand dollars to replace four watch guard systems. The watch guard systems are the in-car camera systems that we utilize in our patrol vehicles, and to pay for maintenance costs. Now, this is something I did not highlight in, in the initial copy of my explanations, but the maintenance for the current system that we have in the cars expires at the end of this year, or near the end of this year, and they require about two hundred and fifty dollars per, and I, forgive me, I know it's just a couple of dollars less than two hundred and fifty, but it's about two hundred and fifty dollars per year, per unit, to maintain those past the five years. They basically told us that, and it was something, I guess I didn't understand when those were originally bought five years ago, I think, that at the end of this, we would be tied to a service contract. It's very minimal, but they, they simply won't work and we won't be able to download the information off the cameras if we don't have that. So it's, our estimation is going to cost fifty-five hundred dollars to minimally keep that going. But I'm also asking for the additional thirty-four thousand, five hundred to replace three of those, or I'm sorry, four of those watch guards cameras. What my intent is, is to put the newest ones in the active patrol vehicles and take the old units that are still functional out and put those into our pool cars, so regardless of what vehicle that any of my patrolmen are driving, they would have the ability to have that in-car camera all the time. Currently, I don't have any pool cars, to my knowledge, that are outfitted with that in-car camera. It's been something we couldn't justify. Thirty-three, two-ten is postage and freight. I did initially ask for an increase of twenty-four hundred dollars. As I came into preparation for the budget, we had, excuse me, we had, had spent a significant portion of that line item, but as we're standing here today, that is stabilized, so I assume we, we had paid for something in advance, and that's stabilized, so it's not as big of an issue, and that could actually be reduced or eliminated if, if that's something that needs to be, so that request. Communication, oh, I'm sorry.
I just went and lost track of that. Let's, is everybody okay with eliminating that back down to twelve thousand? If you can, so note yes.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, that's just a. Been trying to keep close tabs on my budget and, and wanted to make sure we had that updated. Thirty-three, two-forty is communications, cellphone, or which pays for the telephone and cellphone. I'm asking for an increase of four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Three thousand that would be to replace the patrol officer's cell phones, which we estimate is about one hundred dollars per person. The reason we've asked for that primarily is not only the better quality cell phones, but also, more importantly, better quality cameras. That increase to a better quality camera would essentially eliminate the need for buying them separate digital cameras, so they can actually use their cell phones. We all know the quality of photos that can be taken on cell phones now with, with the better versions. Our officers are able to, by virtue of the programs that we have now, we can actually take the phones and take the photographs and upload those directly to our records management system and our evidence management system. It makes it very, very convenient, it's a very big time saver, and it eliminates, again, the need to buy digital cameras to, to take that type of evidence. I feel like it's a, a good and justifiable expense.
Randy, could I add, interject and ask a question here? Just for me, I don't know about anybody else, but you have, you know, a few things here that, to me, are more of a one-time, we're going to buy this, like the, the computers and that. So is there any way that you could get a sheet that says, here are these kind of things, so that if we could get some of those out of other one-time money and get that out of the budget rather than, does that make sense?
Yeah, I can, and I, I've noted to do that on one of those, but the cell phones, I would be concerned that that would be a recurring cost. So next year, two years down the road, I may have to replace some of those phones because phones don't last forever.
Well, that's true, and that may be, but maybe for this year, when you noted in there, it's that, but in another three years, but maybe for this year, if we could do it. I, I don't know, that's just for me, I'm not speaking for everybody else.
Sure.
But that might be a way to look at and try to get our budget to where we, we would like to give our employees a raise, but it's really going to be tight. But if there's things that we can do, one-time money, and we look at what one-time money we have, do those fit into that bucket, maybe?
And I'm, I'm happy to do this any way you'd like.
Yeah, if it's going to be recurring within the next couple of years, then I would say no, let's keep it in the budget because it's, it's going to come up again. But if it's something that, you know, we're only going to need once every five years, it's better to pull that out.
I, I would, and I'm just trying to, to think, I, I would say that, that updating the cell phones could be a one-time purchase, but we also have to know within about two years, that'll have to be, those will have to be renewed. Damage, wear, tear, batteries, those types of things necessitate, you know, for them to be replaced, so I, I mean, I can see both ways.
What about their computers? You know, you said over three years, but if they, I don't know the life of a computer, I.
They're about three to four years. And these, these get, you know, relatively hard use. They're kept inside the car primarily, but they do get relatively hard use. If, if council's pleasure would be to replace the computers as a one-time purchase, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
I'm just saying that's a thought, if we look at that, and maybe part of those, if not all of those, could be thought of that, I don't know. But if we look at it and it's on a separate sheet that says, here's the things that maybe you could look at as a one-time and pull out of the budget. But, but again, that's just me talking, I don't know, I don't speak for the other six, so.
Would it be appropriate for me to list those things and send them to the council for your review?
If, if you did, and then put, how often do you think?
Okay.
They would need to be?
Absolutely, yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I did ask for additional eighteen hundred dollars for three additional cellular counts, and it's, it's my belief that it's a safety feature for our jail transport vans, that each one of those should be equipped with a cell phone. If there's a breakdown or the, Lord knows when, when I transport officers down to Evansville, our radios certainly don't work down there. In the statewide system, there are some benefits of that, but you also have to have somebody listening on the other end immediately when, when that happens. So a cell, cellphone is another form of communication, and it's a safety, in my opinion, a safety feature for my transport officers.
Randy, your transport vans have AVL capabilities?
We are working on that and working on putting computers into each one of those, so they will have that, yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to thirty-three, six-seventy, equipment, maintenance and service contracts, requested an increase of five, or fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that cost reflects an outfit of equipment to eight patrol vehicles. And I, I do want to mention that, a couple of things. Number one, when this was submitted, the thought was that, that fleet committee was going to recommend that we have eight vehicles replaced this year. I think that number has significantly decreased.
We've not made a final decision on that yet.
But.
At the last meeting, it was possibility of that going down.
Yeah, yeah, so this, this number, I don't want it to be shocking, because it might actually go down significantly. But nevertheless, going with outfitting eight vehicles, we have, because of the increase in violence and violent offenders, I have elected to put separation cages to help our officers be a little bit more safe during transport. Those are three thousand, five hundred dollars each and another five hundred dollars to install, which would bring the total cost for those cages to thirty-two thousand dollars. The new Tahos that we just bought, I was able to justify buying that out of our misdemeanor fund, because we do inmate transports, we do a lot of mental health transports and prisoner transports in those vehicles as well. But that's, that's not a limitless fund. That, that was a significant impact on that fund and it is dropping down, but justification on that, again, was for the safety of my officers. I wanted to make sure that they had everything they needed. Be asking council to help me pay for that and for the future vehicles. Striking for each one of those is three hundred and fifty dollars, and that's a total of twenty-eight hundred dollars. Tinting the windows, which is something negotiable, is two hundred and fifty dollars per, for a total of two thousand. Equipment installation and outfitting is eight thousand dollars per vehicle, for a total of sixty-four thousand dollars. And then storage boxes, which we haven't, we haven't purchased in the past or in the recent past, they're about three thousand dollars per vehicle, for a total of twenty-four thousand dollars. The need for the storage boxes, since we moved to Tahos and we don't have a trunk to kind of hold things in place, anybody that has a SUV understands that anything in the back slides around, and, you know, when you're doing any dynamic driving like we often have to, you know, that, that makes the problem even worse. We're trying to get by right now because we don't have it in our budget to buy those. We're trying to get by, by using plastic storage tubs, but that's, you know, we see that as a temporary fix, and that's something I'm trying to work out with council to, to make that a standard piece of equipment.
On the vehicles, I might just, for everybody's information, the reason the fleet committee that may be reduced is because of the time lag we've had in getting vehicles.
Yes.
We've put more miles on existing vehicles, which we now got. We don't need, may need to change vehicles as quick here in the next couple of years.
Right. And I think, I think at the end of the day, we are gonna reduce that number quite a bit. But I just don't have that right now.
So what's the number for each vehicle approximately?
Including cages? You're testing my math skills here. About fifteen thousand six hundred dollars per vehicle. That's with, that's if everything is added.
Does that include the box?
I'm sorry.
Does that include the storage box?
Yes, ma'am. And then this. I did have a note in there that the Tahos of purchasing twenty twenty-three were not outfitted with boxes either, and that's three thousand dollars a piece or forty-five thousand dollars. Are there any other questions on that? And that could potentially be a one-time purchase. Thirty-three, eight-ten, dues and subscriptions. This year, I agreed to purchase and sign contract with a company called Magnet's Works. I've done a tremendous amount of work with this company in vetting to make sure that that's the right fit for us. In fact, this has been about a nine-month project for my agency. They would be providing mental health services in a few ways. The primary one is through a mental health app that our staff would, staff and, including all staff, jail staff, as well as the enforcement and the office staff would be able to participate in. This app, without going into great explanation, it provides immediate feedback for the needs of my staff when it concerns mental health. So if they're, you know, going through a tough time, if they've experienced something very traumatic, if they're just feeling bad about even staying at this job, based on the feedback that they provide, it's able to give them guidance on how to deal with some of these. This, the founder of this company is a world-renowned doctor in psychology and one that our US government has hired to help train special operations forces, Navy SEALs, Delta Force, and so on, is currently working with them as well. He's got an excellent, excellent program and something that I feel is worth investing in our staff. This also gives us some feedback and data anonymously without reporting to the individuals. But it tells us where our problem areas are, it tells us, you know, whether, you know, we have more issues in our jail or in our patrol divisions, you know, with the office staff, and what those types of problems might be and how we can help those employees, you know, feel better about their jobs and work through some of the problems that they maybe have. It's a very, very powerful program, one that, in an effort to, as proof of concept, I'm gonna be spending the ten thousand dollars out of commissary to pay for that. But again, that's something that I feel is an investment in our employees and we'll be asking counsel to help me sustain that in years to come. So I would be asking for that additional funding in that one particular line item. The other two thousand five hundred dollars I've asked for is for our license plate readers. And that's a subscription that we would need to pay for to continue to be able to utilize the license plate readers. And that's something that I would suggest that the council may even consider utilizing some of the seizure mon, drug seizure money that we've been given by the courts to help either pay for or supplement that. And if that's the consideration that the council wants, I do have three current drug seizure orders since the last time I came to you with a request to use that money. So I'd be happy to bring those to you and ask you to consider those.
That's a different idea to me. I don't know about anybody else, but.
Two more quick things that I wanna finish up with. And the next is the evidence technician moved to a full-time position. They're currently a part-time physician. And in a nutshell, the biggest reason I'm asking for that is the increased number of Freedom of Information requests that I've received in my office. Not only have they increased, but almost every request that I get now includes a request for any available video. Now, it seems like that'd be real simple to go to a file and just pull that off and just give it to the person, but it's not that simple. Every one of them has to be reviewed, every one of them has to, a certain amount of redaction that has to take place because, you know, we're limited on what we can put out. We can't have license plates or personal information or even, maybe even faces of juveniles or folks that are disassociated with that particular event. So it does take a lot of time. Long videos certainly take even a lot more time to make sure that they're redacted properly. My request is to move the evidence technician to a full-time position, giving her about ten more hours per week to help process those videos, which, as we, as we get the body cameras out to every officer on our agency, which will happen by before the end of this year, those increases in the responsibility for that is gonna go up significantly.
Is that a civilian position or?
Yes, it is civilian.
How many hours does she work now? The twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'd be eleven hours addition.
That would be beneficial off of that, insurance?
Yes, sir. I think that's cheaper than hiring a whole nother employee to take care of it. But, and I'm trying to, trying to ask for the least impact that I can and be able to still get that job done. Right now, I actually have a lieutenant who's making about seventy thousand dollars a year doing that, who could be focusing his efforts on other things.
Sheriff is a part-time person. Is that the only evidence technician you have taken to your evidence room?
It is officially. I do have other people assigned to that part-time when she's not available. My hope is not to keep spreading things in her, then, as our increase, our request continues to increase.
This would be line item one-two-five-six-three?
Yeah. Part-time evidence tech?
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah.
What would you propose the salary being for a full-time?
That's correct. One-two-five-six-three. And again, I don't have a good estimate on the cost for that because that would have to go through Irwin for determination of the salary.
Does she have a classification now?
She would have. She would have.
I mean, Kim might be able to tell us she's back there. Kim?
Yeah.
Is that what you're doing? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
With the additional responsibilities, I wouldn't know if that would have any impact on that classification or not.
So the thirty-two, eight-seventy-five is what you're asking for to go to part-time? Go to full-time?
Go to full-time.
Sorry?
That's what it was in twenty-three and they had showed the same number for twenty-four.
Twenty-three amount, the part-time amount.
That's correct.
There's not an increase here?
No, there's not, yeah.
I've not asked for any salary increases as what the council was historically asking me to do.
If we would make a full-time addition, that would go up.
That number would go.
Yeah, it would be commensurate to a full-time position.
Okay.
I have that. First of all, it would not need to go to Irwin because we have a job description that shows part-time that we could tweak in-house.
With the addition of the responsibilities, that wouldn't have an impact on that?
Well, if you're gonna, so you are gonna do more responsibilities?
Yes, and that's the whole reason. I mean, it would take care of that.
Then that would, I mean, it wouldn't if it's just more duties, more work within the eight-hour workday or twelve-hour workday? So I guess I'd have to talk to you and see what those are. Because right now, right now, it would, we would just, if you switch it to full-time, it's a civilian pole two and it's at twenty-one eighty an hour. And you just take that times a twenty-eighty, hours a year for that annual salary.
Twenty-one eighty?
Twenty-one eighty civilian pole two.
That's a forty-seven-five?
Okay.
Times two thousand eighty.
Oh, two eighty.
Yes, okay.
Eighty.
Forty-five, three forty-four.
So Randy, she would be doing functions that she's currently not doing with that as full-time?
That's correct. And the only thing that she does right now that has anything to do with digital evidence or these types of things is just transferring files within the system. We would be asking her to be doing reviews and redactions of any videos requested under FOIA or for subpoenas and other types of things. So she would actually be processing those videos as opposed to just shot them.
You know, it's interesting, we heard the same report from the director of the NIVOL One Center. You know, FOIA request has just exploded again, the timing, something to prepare.
I've estimated that ours has tripled this year. Are there any other questions on that one? I'll finish up with the fleet, which will be real quick.
The last goal is on the letter you sent us, no longer needed on the school resource officer in Richmond.
Oh, yep, you're right. I marked that off my list and I didn't even think about it. But yes, it is on yours. I'd originally had a request as Richmond Community Schools was looking at, looking at options. One request was to consider reimbursement program and we would actually hire and deputize the school resource officers as opposed to them being an RCS employee. But obviously, they've chosen a different path and now that's not a, I'm requesting.
So are you saying, saying remove the dare patrolman? Is that what you're saying? Or am I not following?
What line item?
That's why I thought the dare patrolman.
No, it's a request on this letter.
Okay.
About the schools.
Yeah, that's not the dare patrolman?
No, it's not in here.
What line item is it not? It was a request on a separate page.
Gotcha.
Correct, yeah, it was, would be the addition, would have been the addition of four positions.
So, and all those things that were being asked for, that's all gone away?
You mean it's equipment?
Yeah.
It's been agreed upon.
Well, the commissioners have worked agreement with the school.
Okay, okay.
It basically sold. The last item I have is for the commissioners, Q cap fund for fleet. Again, if we are going with eight vehicles, the total request on that, I have is seven hundred sixty thousand, and that's because three hundred sixty thousand that would be for the purchase of eight vehicles, which, again, that's something that's not been determined yet. One jail transport van, which we do know that that's gonna be needed. I'm fairly certain of that, which is an estimated price for fifty-five thousand dollars. And as I came to you earlier this year, and I've added this at your request into the budget, one special purpose vehicle, the armored transport vehicle and rescue vehicle is three hundred fifty thousand. I've since talked with the president commissioners' plaster about this purchase and he's considering that out of other funding to be able to take care of that. But we certainly need your approval for that. I think that's something we'll probably address at another time. I did want to put this in at least to bring it to your knowledge and possibly place him.
One question, Randy, on that armored vehicle?
Yes, sir.
What's life expectancy for that?
Actually, very long. Most of them have those vehicles for twenty-plus years. The average estimated mileage on those are between two and three thousand miles per year because they're only brought out on a special occasion and they're not something I'm gonna be driving in a parade or something like that. So with proper maintenance, it would be a long time. It'd be, in my opinion, it'd be an investment similar to a building.
I like fire truck for volunteer part.
It really is. Yeah.
Anything else for the sheriff? Sheriff, have you had any further conversation with the commissioners about the replacement of the X-ray machine at the entrance of the courthouse?
I have not. That's something that we do definitely need to look at as far as replacement. I don't know that, you know, and I don't know that it matters whether it comes out of my budget or commissioners, it's something that will need to be replaced sometime soon. And I'm happy to handle that, however you all agree.
I just think it's important that it's a topic of conversation that if you come back in coming months, that it was discussed during budget, that that's gonna be an expenditure coming from somewhere.
Yeah.
And we have other funds, but that's possible for that too. How old are those? Do we know? The age of those things?
I really don't write off. I'm gonna estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty years. I think, I think they were installed shortly after. Ron, if you have any good recollection?
I do.
Shortly after.
I did, I wouldn't trust.
Shortly after the enhancement of the courthouse security program.
Did you have some trouble with them last year or the year before and had a?
Yeah, and the service agreement has expired for those and it's very, very difficult to get parts for that particular unit because it is so old. I'm happy, again, to handle that however you'd like. And continue the information for your review, if you'd like that to.
So are you anticipating that within the next year, that's gonna have to be replaced?
I'd say sometime very soon.
I think it needs to be a topic here in this discussion.
Is that on the potential project list for twenty twenty-four? I have it in front of me, but I don't, I don't remember seeing it on here.
But we need to, in the very near future, have a, have a discussion.
It does say courthouse security upgrades. I don't know if that's part of that, but it could be.
It could be, but I don't believe it was specifically. But we need to have a conversation amongst the group about one-time expenditures. And it would certainly fall into that category.
Yeah.
I think in fairness to the sheriff, that was an inf.
This is kind of a preventative thing, we want to make sure that it's repaired and replaced.
You don't wait until those break. Maybe you can add that to your one-time list, just so if we catch it there, we might catch it on the other list and at least we won't forget about that.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Any other question?
No, but I have something I did want to mention, I forgot. Got an officer, James McCully, or is that saying it right?
Yeah.
We had some wind damage tree down on the road near our house not long ago and I went down and started sawing it up and he got out of the car and started pitching wood off the side of the road between the two of us. We got that cleaned up before the highway got there, so.
Yeah.
I appreciated his help, but I was impressed with the way he dove right in and worked on it.
Thank you for that. I'm very pleased with Deputy McCully's performance. He is a, actually a veteran officer from down south.
Former Marine?
Yep, he's a former Marine. I guess once Marine, always Marine. But just an excellent, all-around person, excellent deputy, one I'm proud to have as a affiliate in Wayne County Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, have you gotten the changes down in the spreadsheet that we decided to take out of his request?
I've tried to make a couple of notes, but I'm not sure I got them all.
We need to make sure that that gets updated right.
Right, sir. And I'll send you a list of the potential one-time purchase items.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you all.
Thank you, thanks for everything you do.
Madam Pressa, would you like to force recess and do personnel now?
Do we need a break? Can we go on?
We need a break.
Do we need a break?
Do we want to keep the finance meeting and talk now?
And talk later, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Yes.
So I will call this meeting recessed for later time here this morning.
Okay, and we'll take a five-minute break.
We'll reconvene Finance. We have one other item to consider is a transfer on the Highway Department. Mike, do you want to come forward? Looks like a motor vehicle highway, you want to talk about the transfer meeting?
Right, I think, I can't remember the dollar amount, $20,000 will be coming from our overtime line item to other road equipment and then 15,000 for the, so, and then 15,000 from.
Seasonal help.
Seasonal help to the, well, from overtime to seasonal help. So that, we're going to run short on our seasonal help dollars for this year. The other one is to purchase, the $20,000 is to finish purchasing a trailer, transport trailer for equipment. So we kind of had in the budget, but then our prices increased on some of the trucks and everything, all the equipment cost. I think we had about 56,000 left in, that we did not use in overtime last year. So majority of your overtime is going to come in that January to March during the snow time. So the rest of it's kind of about normal per se. So since we had 56,000, there's still going to leave $35,000 or so left in that overtime that we probably won't use. So that's why we requested a transfer of that.
Okay. So I need a motion to do a transfer in the motor vehicle highway fund from line item 13640 overtime truck driver to have 15,000 transferred to 13610 seasonal help and 20,000 to line item 44420 other road equipment.
So moved.
Multiple, I'll let Bobby pick.
There you go. Whoever you want.
We have a motion in a second on the transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bobby, do you need a copy of this before I give this back to Mike?
I'll put it on your desk.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike. At this point, we will recess again and so the personnel meeting can take place and we'll reconvene after the personnel meeting. Personnel went a long time here. It's 10 till 12 at this point. If you want, we could look at some things or if you want to just wait until workshop, we can, I can kind of go through things and kind of make some summary, you know, possible actions to take. I mean, the bottom line is, is we talked about, we don't have much money here to deal with. We don't know what the income tax proceeds, that can go up and down. It's actually been a decrease before, but I think the economy of Wayne County has been pretty good this last year or so. Those projections haven't come out yet, but we may have a little bit more money there. So if it's okay with everyone, we'll take a, take a look at that, at workshop then.
I think any pre-work you could do would help our time required to discuss things.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, there were a lot of employees, we can kind of take a look at that and, and I guess at workshop, what the goal would be is with limited amount of money, what are the priorities that folks have? So if you want to look at that and we can discuss that then at workshop, that's what I think we'll do.
Okay.
Want to go early on workshop or take regular?
Well, does Finance meet?
Fleet committee?
Or Fleet committee?
Don't meet, but we can move, we can move that out.
Yeah, we can flex it.
I would just ask that, because I'm going to send a request to Commissioners and to Beth, that that meeting be electronic attendance, so anything that we have, because I'm going to be out of state, that we share electronically. Please. Would everyone be open to starting that meeting earlier?
Can you agree that fair?
Yep.
Line item 5?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock would be fine.
Are we okay on advertising that?
Do you want?
I believe so.
Pardon?
If I get it out tomorrow, I think it'll be in Wednesday and then day of. How many, does it need 10 days or? 10 days. Okay, yeah, you'll be good.
Okay, we're good. Are we good?
Yeah, I think so.
Is it 10 days?
10 days prior to.
Has to be in the paper 10 days.
Okay, our notice or the paper 10 days before?
It has to be in the paper 10 days prior to.
And it will be out for another week.
It will be seven days then, right, Mike?
It would be next Wednesday.
Anything put in tomorrow would be in the issue of the night.
Of the night, and our workshop's on the 16th, that's one week. That's only seven days.
What do you?
Babe, if you could put it in. What happened to the center?
Well.
Can you do it? Will it, does the pladium do it?
Well, what about, I just told, I just told Ron, we didn't, you know, I mean, can we give any type of electronic notification? Does that count?
I don't know about that.
I don't think so.
I have to advise Ron.
Does anyone know?
It needs to.
We'll have to check. In the meantime, I think you need to consider it starting at 6 o'clock like usual. We'll move it up to 5 if we have time to advertise it and we'll let you all know obviously.
Yeah, okay.
But if we can't start earlier, we just have to.
Can they advertise in the pladium? Do they do that?
You don't have to post newspapers, you could just get it in.
I mean, if we could get it in pladium.
In one, so every week.
Then, I mean, we can go ahead and start early.
Well, yes, we just, a little bit later if we don't start till 6.
Well, if we're going to change the advertising to include electronic attendance, it's going to have to go in the pladium.
Yeah. Well, let's just do the pladium if that's okay and then we'll just make it 5 o'clock and electronic.
I have to send that to Ron and Bobby to make sure that we're doing it correctly.
I know.
Okay, you think that's okay? If it's not okay, Bobby will let us know and we'll be at 6, otherwise we'll be at 5.
If you get it in there by Monday, it should be okay, so.
Then the pladium would finally have some local news.
Some local news that isn't crime. I think they just, they just get the court reports and they make that the pladium, so.
Headlines often, the main headlines.
You'll have to send a reminder out anyway, Bobby, so.
And then you won't advertise?
I think this is going downhill.
It is.
Yes, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for attending.